Eric Garcetti also asking to give us a little of his background and where we grew up and so we get to know him a little better. Eric?
Thank you so much, Richard. Good evening. Can everybody hear okay in the back? I know the acoustics were a little bad, but I want to make sure everybody can hear. It is wonderful to be with you and thank you, Richard, for the introduction. I joke after five and a half years, I'm not really council president, it's more like group therapist. I think the number of hours I've spent so much in politics is really about getting people to listen to each other and to recognize what we have in common, to learn to be a good listener. I know I'm modeling this by speaking a lot today, but it's really the most important thing about politics and about community, I think, is learning to listen, especially in a city like ours. But all the folks that are here, it's wonderful to be back. Soha is the gold standard, and I don't say that to any other homeowners group. You have really been the gold standard for decades. And Richard, the entire board, and what you've done for not just the Sherman Oaks community, but the valley as an example to the city is to be commended. It's great to be home, too. I grew up in the San Fernando Valley, I lived on Woodley Avenue. I spent probably as much time in Sherman Oaks as I did in Encino. Every single day after school at the old Galleria, I would spend time there. Switched buses there on the old RTD and hang out with friends, hang out in the mall, back when the mall was the place to be, or go down to Midichigal. Sherman Oaks, it was great to actually hear the singing group when I came in because my mom sang with a group of her neighbors from Sherman Oaks and Encino in a group that some of you may have caught, an all-female group that sang a cappella and also a company called Collage. And they'd sing in bar mitzvahs and bat mitzvahs and weddings and birthdays. And so this brought back some great memories. And also to be here at Notre Dame, which three graduates, one, of course, Catherine McPhee, who had a great fame on American Idol, but Dennis Zai, my colleague, graduated from here. And even more significantly, our chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff for the United States of America, Michael Mullen, is a graduate of Notre Dame. And he came through LA a couple of years ago, back when Admiral Brewer was the head of our school system. I served in the Navy and I'm still in the reserve component. And he said, "You're a Navy guy, I want to introduce you to this other Navy guy if you have some time." I said, "Of course, who is it?" He said, "Well, it's Mike Mullen, he's coming home to LA." And so we brought him to city council and we were able to, he talked about Notre Dame, I know he came here. And it's really a source of pride, he's the first chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff to come from Los Angeles, let alone here from the San Fernando Valley, and served under both President Bush and President Obama. So this is a really remarkable place, it is home, and it also represents and brings back to me what is great about Los Angeles. So I grew up here, you know, I remember a Los Angeles to me that is the imprint of why I am doing what I do now. A place where I felt safe and secure, a place where I would meet friends and we'd walk to Little League over on Havenhurst, a place where I'd see our police officers circling because Woodley Avenue was the dividing point for the San Fernando Valley. So I got both the east and west divisions at the time on our street. It was a place where I felt, you know, secure enough to be able to fly around the neighborhood and be the guy in summers who would mow folks' lawn or trim their bushes. A place where I think the limitlessness of this city was borne out, not just physically by the landscape here, but also the time. We could get anywhere conveniently, it was 20 minutes to wherever we wanted to go, San Fernando Valley to west LA, west LA to downtown. Now it's 20 minutes to get onto the freeway on some days. My family and I had a community garden plot right along the freeway at Havenhurst and the 101. And we got to know our neighbors, you know, we'd pull carrots out of the ground and introduce ourselves to the folks in the next garden plot. And to me, that's what made LA special. Whenever I'd leave LA, I'd say, "Wow, I didn't realize what a unique city this was," because we had all the trappings of a big city. We had the culture and the art and the music, we had the amazing people who were attracted to come here. Like Nigel, sorry, not Nigel, it's, get it right here, Basil, sorry, who shares a alma mater with me, we were talking about one school of economics and he came from England and whether it's folks that come from across an ocean or whether they grew up here, this is a place that has always represented where we can find the best and the brightest, where we put people on the moon, where we make conventions and help win wars, where we capture the stories, not just of this country, but this world through Hollywood. That's what LA has been. But when we think about this moment in time, Los Angeles is kind of facing a little bit of a crisis of confidence. I mean, we used to believe we were the center of the world, we could solve any problem, but when we're honest with ourselves, we're playing so much defense these days. I mean, listen to ourselves and Soha does it as well as anybody. I remember when I was in college, my dad used to send me the bright blue newsletters from Soha, I used to read them and it would connect me. I was at the college in New York City and I had this great connection of being back home. But so much of what we have to do is saying, we have to stop something bad from happening instead of being able to kind of lay out what our dreams are and be for something. We all know that it's so easy to tap into fear or to motivate people out of defense. If I tell you right now there's a horrible thing about to be built a block away from here, we can turn out 500 people to oppose that. But when we have those quiet conversations with ourselves and say, "Hey, let's get together and say what we want to see in the future, what are our hopes, what sort of optimism do we have," five or six people will show up. I think that's changing now to some degree, but part of it reflects that we don't believe the big problems are solvable anymore. In our hearts, we don't think traffic ever really will be solved. We'll probably have the worst pollution in America forever, even if it's better than when I grew up here in the 70s. The challenges we have to make this a business-friendly city and a place where somebody wants to open up a restaurant or a small independent store, that the city won't get in the way but actually help them get open, that we will be a place that has good schools again, that we can rely on in our neighborhoods, that we embrace as the center of our community, we've lost, I think, the ability to trust that we're headed in the right direction. But I'm very, very bullish on Los Angeles. I always knew I would return to Los Angeles, I was born here and I'm pretty sure I'm gonna die here. This is the place where I want to spend my life and where I am from. While I grew up in the San Fernando Valley, I'm your average LA story in that none of us in this room have an average story. I have an Italian last name, but my father's side of the family is Mexican-American, my mother's side is Jewish. All of them grew up in Boyle Heights when it was both Mexican and Jewish. You can still get the strong meat at all the taco stands there, which reflects my own heritage. My dad grew up in South Los Angeles, went to Washington High School, my mom grew up in Central LA and then west LA, excuse me, west LA, graduated from university high school. So we've kind of lived and been a part of this incredible city in all parts of it. But when we look at the city right now and we ask ourselves, who are we, who we want to be, those challenges are much tougher. And because we are so good at finding the differences between ourselves, of saying again what we're against, that challenge of finding an energy and finding the things that will bring us together has been what I've worked on the last 10 years. So I represent an area kind of the center of Los Angeles, 13th Council District, which stretches from Hollywood essentially to downtown, the heart of the city. And I remember going to Hollywood as a kid, it was a place that had all these, you know, storied past, but my dad and I would get on the 101 and get off at Highland and go to the place where my grandfather got his haircut, where my father got his haircut, and where I got my haircut. My other grandfather had been a barber for many years, but he was getting too old to cut my hair, so he started going to Hollywood. And when we go there, we would go there and get our haircut, maybe have a hamburger at Hampton's, if you remember Hampton's, it was over on Highland. But then we kind of get out of there quickly because Hollywood was not a place you wanted to spend a lot of time in the 70s and 80s. It was a place that had lost that luster. It was in some ways indicative of what Los Angeles had become in many places. When I took over in the 13th Council District, this was an asset that was important not only for all of us when we bring visitors here, Hollywood's still the number one tourist destination in America. But in the 1980s, our Chamber of Commerce there did a study, the average stay was 23 minutes in Hollywood. 23 minutes for a tourist. They'd get off the bus at the Chinese Theater and take a picture, stray a little bit one block or the other and say, "I'm getting the heck out of here." You know, I don't feel, and go to Beverly Hills or go to Disneyland or Universal City, someplace else to find Hollywood. And that was too bad because the golden age of Hollywood, when that had been a place where the best shopping in the city was, where there were shows that you could go to, a place where you could stroll Hollywood in sunset and feel safe, had been lost. Until the community kind of came together and we decided in the early part of the last decade to start figuring out what we wanted to see in Hollywood. There had been a big investment with the Red Line, which terminates in North Hollywood, that linked the valley to Hollywood and downtown. And we began to look at old buildings, how to preserve history, the Brown Derby had been knocked down. My first year, people told me, "You have to knock down the Palladium and all these other historic buildings." I said, "Absolutely not, we don't want to lose that sense of history, in fact, we want to build on it." And here in the valley, I think, in many ways, it's the same predicament. Who are we and what scale do we want now? How do we find each other? Where is that intersection where we're gonna have a great cup of coffee or we're gonna meet a friend and we're not gonna spend two hours trying to get to each other? We in Hollywood and other areas that are represented that have maybe had less dramatic growth and less dramatic redevelopment, places like Silver Lake, which also had the same problems with crime, Atwater Village, which is very much like the San Fernando Valley, it's kind of linked to the San Fernando Valley, we've tried to preserve that sense of what LA was, encouraging small businesses. I'm sure some of you read Steve Lopez's column in the LA Times, the kindest thing that's ever been written, he's not usually somebody who writes kind of things, he's a hilarious writer and a very incisive writer. I think Arnold Schwarzenegger is his latest victim this week, and deservedly so. But he wrote about a small cupcake bakery down the street from where my wife and I live in Echo Park that was trying to get open. And the city of Los Angeles, this is this wonderful friend of mine now, her name is Jennevee, who just had a dream to open up a bakery. You know, she didn't, it wasn't a chain store, she had dreamt of this all her life, she'd saved money up, and she took over an old little storefront church on Echo Park Avenue. And, you know, it was probably about an eighth the size of this room, very small bakery space. And the city of LA said, "Well, you know what? We need you to bury a big grease trap in front of about the size of a VW truck." Even though she wasn't gonna be frying anything or doing anything, that's just what the regulation is, "Sorry, we can't do anything about it." And oh, by the way, you're gonna have to do underground parking. Imagine, this is an eighth the size, and this is a street where people walk in a neighborhood that wanted her to be there, there was no controversy about the parking. And because it took her three or four months of just fighting the city and taking out loans, she almost wasn't able to realize her dream. We worked with her and we steered through the bureaucracy of the city and got that cupcake bakery open. And she talked to Steve Lopez about it and she said, "You know, Eric Garcetti in his office gave us small-town help in a big city." That should be, you know, that was the city I grew up in. While it was a huge city, it felt like I lived in a small town. Here in the San Fernando Valley, it had that intimacy. And we have lost that, whether it is sometimes by the bureaucracy that we create or our lack of ambition to solve our big problems. And yet, if you look at some of the biggest challenges we've faced, take crime, which you heard the report today, we've had the steepest drops in crime, double digits even this year, too, for the last 10 years running, to the point where it's the safest city since I've lived here and I was born here in 1971, and it's the, it's probably the safest city since, I think, even the mayor was born here, you were saying the other day, since 1955. And our homicide rate is down to about the same level as when I was born, even though we have a million more people here. It shows that we can do something, when we focus on a problem, when we won't surrender to the forces and say, "Hey, let's let our police department go down, let's let it, you know, go smaller, we're safe enough," where we actually challenge ourselves to solve that, that we can create the conditions for a great city again. As was mentioned before, I didn't know if I was gonna get here tonight because we have our budget today. We actually, this was the quickest budget in 10 years that we've passed. It was still a long day, we finished at 4:53. And I think part of the reason that we were able to do it well is in these very, very tough times, where a lot of people are still out of work, businesses are struggling, while the city was facing record deficits, we actually rolled up our sleeves a couple of years ago and said, "We can solve these problems, we're Angelinos." We cut 4,000 positions from the city of Los Angeles, almost all without layoffs. But to give you a perspective on that, that's the same number of people from our general fund, we didn't eliminate any police officers, we kept our firefighters, and we'll talk about that in the second Strong as well. But that's the same levels when Tom Bradley left office and we have a million more residents. But it's what we have to do, a household has to do it, a business has to do it. You can't run government by adding a zero to the balance sheet and say, "Hey, look, it's balanced. Look at what's happening in Sacramento right now." It's such a difficult context there, they don't even know how they will get out of where they are. So we downsized city government by 4,000, we focused on our core missions. And we also looked at what are the sources of the deficits that we face? It was pensions and healthcare costs that were out of control. We quietly, behind the scenes, sat down, negotiated with our unions, and we have, we emerged a few weeks ago with an agreement that I helped negotiate directly to basically double the pension payments that our city workers pay in to help balance the budget. It was a good thing for them because it preserves their benefits, but it was the right thing, it almost doubled the amount that they'd pay. No other big city in America has come close to doing that. We have, for the first time, people paying into their healthcare. And I could go along with this, but those things have helped us get to a point where today, when we passed the budget, it was done unanimously, unlike what was presented to us when we had the mayor's budget, we took out 100% of the bar, because I don't think you balance a budget by doing it by printing paper. We was that in Washington, the joke is Washington can print the dollars, Sacramento steals them, but we haven't actually balanced them. And here in LA, we proved that. But what that lays down is now the foundation for prosperity for the next few years, two or three years from now, to be able to say, "We got out of this with a good credit rating, we got out of this preserving core benefits." And today, we're also able to make sure that we prioritize what is important. We had a proposal to permanently close 18 different truck companies in our fire department and to permanently close, I think, another six ambulance companies. And we rejected that today. We said, "Once these are permanently gone, they will never come back." In fact, we went from last year having about 22 companies on any given day throughout the city out of hundreds, but 22 closed, to today probably somewhere more like 15, proposed by the mayor, 18, and we found even additional dollars. Because for me, that is the most basic thing we do, responding to a 911 call that you should have a firefighter or a paramedic there. It was proposed that we furlough police officers this year to balance the budget. And we rejected that today because that would be crazy, why would we be hiring police officers and then asking other ones to furlough themselves, essentially take them off the streets? That's unacceptable. And we also put dollars back that had been, that had gone away over the last couple of years. Our libraries will reopen and I co-authored and thank you to you all who voted for Measure L, which didn't raise taxes at all, but made sure that our libraries would have enough money, as they always have said in the charter, in the charter that they should have to be open. Amidst of the worst recessions since the Great Depression, our Department of Water and Power proposed raising our power rates by 28% in one year. And when we said, "We don't think you need to do that," and they said, "Yes, not only do you have to do that," they basically put a gun to our heads and said, "If you don't, we won't give you the transfer of the profits that your Department of Water and Power does." Instead of having a payment to shareholders, we own PWP and every year they give us money to take care of our streets and all the things that the trucks that they use drive on and to help our parks and libraries stay open. They said, "We're not gonna even give you that money." There was nobody rooting for us, and so I co-authored, and many of you I know probably came out to some of the meetings we had out here in the valley and elsewhere, to have a rate care advocate, somebody who's gonna be on our side, who looks at any proposed rate increases on power and water and says, "Well, we think this is either a good idea or we think that it's a bad idea. We think that they're legitimate." And what we showed this past year is we beat back that rate increase, the Department of Water and Power is still producing water, it's still producing power, and they can run their shit better first before going to us to just raise the rates. These are the sorts of things we have to do to make sure that we have a city that's accountable and it's also accessible. Let me end with a couple of other things. I've always believed that government should be not just accessible, but it should be on your front door. When I first ran, what I loved, I didn't know a lot about Adlai Stevenson back then, but I bought myself a pair of shoes and I literally only took them off at night. I didn't expect to win when I first ran, but I walked holes through those shoes. I now have them up in Lucite in my office to remind myself of what hard work is about and how I got here and the responsibility I have to always be close to my constituents. But one thing I did when I got elected is I never stopped walking. Every month, I go to another neighborhood and we go door to door and knock on people's doors. Once they realize you're not trying to convert them to anything, you're not trying to sell them anything, and then they, you're not even running and asking for a vote, they go, "Wow, well, come on in." And you sit down in people's living rooms and you get to talk to them. And again, that skill of just listening, saying, "Well, what's wrong on your block? What's happening in this little neighborhood, this subneighborhood on your cul-de-sac? What's going on and what can we do better to address that?" Remarkable things happen. And because the bar is so low, people expect such little out of government, the fact that you're there, you already have them interested. But then you can train them not just from folks who are telling you what to do, but engage a local organization, a neighborhood council or a homeowners association or a Chamber of Commerce. And so we do that every single month. I hold office hours every two weeks where anybody can just come in, sign up or just show up and meet with me. I met with thousands of people because I used to be a professor before and I loved office hours, it was the best time I had and I want to do it with constituents. So I've literally met with thousands of constituents. We're trying to take it one step further, which is in tough times, how do we build a smart city? How do we build a city that with fewer resources can accomplish more? I'll give you two examples. One is actually right here, well, two of them are on my phone. So we still get a lot of phone calls, we still have people who walk into our office. But let's take the issue of transportation, right? We don't think we can ever reduce park, reduce traffic in a city. Well, in Hollywood, we found that 30% of the traffic in central Hollywood, the shopping area, was caused by people circling the block looking for a parking space. None of us have ever done that, right? We've never looked round and round and round, 30% of the traffic. So we were switching out our parking meters in Hollywood to, we have the new ones for cutted cars and stuff. And we were able to install sensors that when a car leaves a parking space is able to send that information back to us. And there's a software developer in San Francisco who could have done this anywhere in the world, they said, "I want to be here in LA and I want to be here in Hollywood." And so we became the first neighborhood in the world to have this application called Parker, which on your iPhones or your Androids can tell you, this is the Studio City one, in real time, how many parking spaces are available and where they are on the street. So right now, in Studio City, I can look at this, for instance, and on Ventura Boulevard, you know, between Rhodes and Witsit, there are four spaces on the north side and two spaces on the south side available right now. So if anybody wants to leave here, go shopping, you can actually see it on your phone. Another application that we did, and we have this for Hollywood as well, is something, I didn't name it, but it's called Garcetti 311. And everybody has, or most people have a camera on their smartphone. And so with your BlackBerry or your iPhone or your Android, you can take a picture using your camera. And because our cameras are smart enough to say exactly where they are through GPS, you select on the menu whether it's a light that's out, a pothole, some graffiti, there's a little drop-down menu, you say, "Okay, it's graffiti," and you hit send. And instead of waiting on hold, instead of trying to figure out which department, instead of trying to see whether or not you can connect with a human being, it goes straight to saying, "This is the exact location, this is the problem." And then you can follow up when it's done and tell you that it's been done. You can actually go and track everything you've ever put in there. Now, this only works unfortunately in my district right now, but Paul Corian has one as well that works in his district and we're working to now look if we can do this citywide. It's an example, I mean, the amount of money we have to spend for a 311 operator to be on the phone waiting is quite expensive. We want to have those because we want some people who, that's their preferred way of communicating, we want to make sure we have them. But we can handle volume much higher by being able to do this at a fraction of the comments. The second example is our streets. I'm very, very, very passionate about our roads. A little bit of trivia, and by the way, if you haven't pushed this out, June 4th or 5th, you can send this out on an email list, we're having another, our latest operation pothole, and this was a very punishing year on our streets because of all the rains. I went out in December and spent an entire day actually pushing about two and a half tons of asphalt, not just the photo op time, but I wanted to stay with the crew the whole day and actually put in an honest day of work. And learned a lot about our streets and how we approach them. This will be the first year since World War II that the city of Los Angeles pays more miles of roads than degrade. Let that sink in for a second, because we all have that broken axles and burst tires. This is the first year since World War II, we will actually get ahead of the curve and pave more miles than during this year will degrade. That is unconscionable. In the city where Carr was supposed to be king, that we have, whatever that is, almost 70 years of neglect by our streets. Now, it's nothing to brag about because on a scale of 1 to 100, we'll go from a 62 to a 63. As a former teacher, that's still a D minus, and we gotta get our grade up. But at least we're not gonna go backwards. And I have the highest rated streets in the city in my district. It's because we've tried to also, again, be smarter. So we now actually use equipment throughout LA that looks underneath the city, that looks underneath the streets and using infrared technology will tell us, because you can't judge a street by its cover, whether it really needs to be paved or not. Sometimes it looks like it needs to be paved and so we spend the money there, when in fact, a slurry seal or just a little bit of repair for much less would have sustained that road for another decade. Other times, something looks great is about to crumble, by the time it finally does crumble, we have to spend so much more than if we had dealt with that at that time. Again, it's an inefficient way of doing it. So in my district, we try to not just listen to whoever's crying loudest for their street or the latest person to visit me, but we actually say, "Well, let's take the machine there. Okay, now let's look at the list. We'll get to you eventually, we promise, but let's figure out a way to do it." And so I have an 82-plus percent rating in my own district. We can do these things, we can make it happen, and I see that it's time for me to wrap up and take some questions. But I will say this in conclusion, LA is a place that is unlike any in the world. There's a cliche that you see the world, or the face of the world on the streets of LA. Whenever I left LA, I found the opposite to be true, because I grew up with this diversity, with this incredible optimism. Whenever I'd leave LA, I would see the face of LA wherever I was. I'd see it in New York, I'd see it in other cities, I would see that sense of what was achievable. And when I would tell people I'm from LA, their eyes would light up because we do represent something to the world, we do represent something to this country. And I know that we can not only steer through these tough times, but if we believe in finding each other, if we listen, and if we have the courage to stand up for what we believe in, our brightest days are ahead of us. I know that that is true for Sherman Oaks, I know it's true for the San Fernando Valley, and I definitely know it's true for the city of Los Angeles. So thank you for the opportunity and I'm happy to answer all the questions.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Matt Epstein who has a question, I did get a question also from a person, her name is Wendy, and her question was, "Are you gonna be running for mayor?"
I have been literally, over my years with the election and the budget till today, so it's a good day to ask. I am strongly leaning that way, I turned out in 2013, I'll probably, I'm talking to my family, it's a big decision to make, and I'll be making that decision probably towards the end of the summer, but it's most likely.
Okay, so we'll let Wendy know. We have a bunch of questions and the council president has assured us that if I don't get to your question, he'll stay afterwards to get to your question. There's a few questions here that are a little bit either, a little bit too specific for him to answer as far as just dealing with Sherman Oaks issues, your street, and I'm not gonna ask those questions because it's, it's out of his, his area. And if I don't ask your question, it's not because it's the smartest question, it's just because maybe I ran out of time. So we always ask the easy questions first, and since you're such a fan of Los Angeles and you had a great speech about that, the first question, and again, if you, if I ask your question, I'm gonna say the name, if you want to stand up, that'd be great, that way he can answer you instead of looking at me. This is from George Halverston? I don't know if I said your last name, there's George, okay. "Is the city council of Los Angeles considering a city income tax?"
No. No, we don't have the power to statewide, we're not considering it, and we're past and I think we need to live inside our means of.
Terrific. If he asks, if he answers all the questions that quickly, we will get to all the questions, including the one that's gonna do the CD5. This is from Janet Couples, right here, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it a little bit smaller because you did a two-page dissertation here. "Why are builders and developers allowed to even think they can submit plans that so completely violate the Ventura Boulevard specific plan? This homeless association has continually been on the alert for plans that get approved before the homeowners can say, 'Wait, it's a violation.'"
You know, the Ventura Boulevard specific plan was something that, you know, where the old boys market was on Ventura. I remember when I, as a kid, that not only Soha, but Encino and other homeowners associations really did amazing work to make sure that at a moment when this valley could have exploded and turned into something else, was the model for saying, "Look, it's not that we don't want businesses, we want vibrant commercial areas, it's not a NIMBY approach, it's a reasonable thing about scale." And I think that is the most critical piece. We have put such little dollars into planning. To give you the example, the community plans, which should be the basis, we should have, instead of, what we have in Los Angeles is all about, "What can I get away with?" Instead of having clear, consistent rules. And because sometimes we don't update those clear, consistent rules, it's not always, it often is, but it's not always even the fault of the developers, because people are saying, well, in Hollywood, for instance, right now, we're working with a community plan from nineteen eighty-three. It had, when I came in in two thousand and one, they said, oh, this one and the one in Silver Lake Echo Park are the last two to be updated, don't worry, we'll get it done the next year or so. This is two thousand and ten, I think, two thousand and ten, and we still have eleven, just kidding. Two thousand and eleven, we still haven't gotten it done. I mean, it is embarrassing. We, one of the things that was proposed in the budget was cutting out some of the community planning staff. And today, not only did we preserve that, we actually added a few other planners back in place. We need to be regularly updating, and I almost put this on the ballot in March, but folks asked me not to in bad budget times, but I hope I can do it maybe in a year or so, where there would be a guarantee to every community that we would update the community plan once a decade. That doesn't seem to be a big stretch, once a decade, but at least you would always be in the decade where you're able to kind of dictate what goes where. And when we have that in place, the, um, enforcement of that would be that much easier. We could create a better culture in planning and building and safety, and also in this, I mean, so many of these updates are like, well, there's a developer who wants this, he only gets a couple of exceptions, and that becomes the whole debate. It cannot be that, tell people what they want, it'll be cheaper for them and more business friendly to do it if they conform to what we say is allowable, and then it won't be about, what can I get away with? And then Marshall Long asks, kind of a, a follow-up to that, how do we get the building department to enforce the building codes? Well, we work very hard in, in my district to do it. I think you just have to, where, where's Marshall's? Marshall? Oh yeah, skip update. Um, you have to, you have to bird dog it. I mean, you really do, because we've seen, there's a lot of great people in Department of Building Safety, we've also seen in recent weeks, there's some issues and problems there. Um, and those aren't new to the department. By law, they must. Now, there's a lot of places that are under staff, but they work off of fees that should sustain a hundred percent of their staffing. So there is no good excuse for them not enforcing laws, particularly in Department of Building Safety. But if you have specific ones, I'm happy, even though it's outside my jurisdiction, to work with my colleagues, uh, with Paul, um, uh, with the Pauls, um, and to help, you know, any specific budget where that, that is not happening. In my district, a way we've been able to do that is we try to get before with the community, before a developer meets with me, I say, go to the community. And if you're gonna meet with me, I want community members to be there too. So there's not even the space for backroom deals, you know, I, I want it to be as transparent as possible. And I also then invite the city staff to be there as well. So I don't know if it's on new projects, but certainly when people are enforcing that on new ones, I make sure that there's a team that stays pretty consistent on any project throughout. Did you wanna?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not. I'm sorry, Marshall, we just don't. We can chat a little bit more. Okay, thank you. Um, the next two questions actually come from, they're, they're two different issues, but they both have a, a common thread, which is, uh, uh, the city wasting money. Uh, the first one's from Jerry Wein, Wein, Weinerman or Weinerman. Um, Jerry, you here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, when the city sweepers come, they seem rushed, suddenly cleaning all the way to the curb, often, often maybe more debris than they pick up. Do they have to beat the, do they have to complete too many streets at a specific time and as a consequence are not able to dump their loads often enough? It's a total waste of money. And then Jill, or I'm sorry, Jim, D, D E, I can't read it. Do you mind if we read through?
I can read through.
Thank you. Potholes continue to be a problem, some pot-ridden areas have, to show poor workmanship that require related work. And I just want to actually, uh, add on that, Sherman Oaks just experienced, um, uh, a whole slurry, uh, slurry coat, uh, area. And it, and it's, and it's interesting because, um, for instance, Woodland Canyon, uh, had a slurry coat about six months ago, then they came back out, and I understand it, it costs about twenty-seven thousand dollars per street to, to do that, which is pretty inexpensive. But then they just redid it because they did such a poor job the first time. And in the, part of it is that they, they only get twenty-four hour notice to the residents, and so the residents are, they have to pull their cars out, they don't have enough time to, to plan on that. The other thing is that they don't do enough prep work on the street itself. So it's, it's, it's kind of like shellacking an existing table without saving it first. So those are the questions. I think, I think there was a lot of political pressure and, and I'm speaking for myself, I think there's a lot of political pressure for get as many miles as you can, get as many potholes filled as you can. And I think on both, it's quality, not quantity. I mean, that, certainly that's what we've tried to do in my district, and we try to make sure we work with folks ahead of time, because I, I hate seeing a slurry sealed street with one track of, of car wheels that goes through and ruins twenty-seven thousand dollars, because either we fail the notification, but sometimes it's also cars who will move, who'll actually move the barriers and say, I'm going home, I don't care, it looks dry. Um, so we have to do, I think, a better job on that. The, the potholes too, we're doing too much coal pothole filling, we'll do a bunch of that on, on Operation Pothole, but we need to really put our money and invest in the hot stuff that will stay there and can last for a decade. Um, you know, it's nice and we need to do emergency stuff after a huge rain, sure, we need to get out there and put a bunch of coals up, get as many pickup trucks as we can. But one of the things that I can be focusing on this year, I stopped down with our Bureau of Street Services, they have ten different suggestions for better ways for us to use our money and more efficiently, uh, do our paving. And I'm gonna try to get some of that done. I think the knowledge is there, but sometimes the political pressure is, hey, let me brag about how many miles, um, have been touched, and nobody's actually focusing on the quality. The second piece is, I chair a committee that deals with all of our stimulus dollars. And, um, it's a very complicated city, by the way, to do paving in, because there's usually about three or four or five utility companies. And oftentimes, if you pave something, we've all seen this, and then suddenly, within a year, they come in and dig it up for cable or dig it up for electricity, that's like, can the left hand talk to the right hand? And we have got much better with that, but we're gonna use our stimulus dollars for the federal government, and by the way, our stimulus dollars on the road, we had to beg Washington to allow us to use our own city crews, which would face the layoff and are among the best in the country, they're actually quite well respected. We have equipment that a lot of other cities don't have, we've developed here, for instance, we can chew up a street, recycle that asphalt on site and put it back with just a little bit of new material, whereas, you know, all the truck trips and the pollution, the quality of other, if you have to go to another site, would be much worse. But we're gonna use these stimulus dollars, we begged Washington, we're able to use our own crews, they said you could only use private crews, and, and our, our experience is with a lot of private crews, it's even sometimes worse. And that's why we got ahead of the curve for the first time. This year, we will spend out the remaining part of our stimulus dollars, and I think not only will we get ahead, but hopefully we'll do it with a lot more quality. The city sweepers, their answer is no, absolutely not. They, they, they shouldn't have anything more that's probably a bad driver, we've had that, experiences with that as well. If you tell me where it is, I'll, I'll talk to their supervisor and make sure that they're not just zooming by. Maybe you have, maybe here, you're, whoever's doing the particular sites here.
Whenever you drive and you see a sweeper going through, it's the same thing.
We've got great sweepers, uh, in my district, so again, I'll, I'll talk to and see if there's, you know, whoever's supervising this area of town as well, if they've got too many miles, that's something that they have to tell the public and stop doing as many miles so they can do the ones they're doing right. There's no point in doing more if you do all that, it's like the, it's like the thing. All right, and, uh, just a, a follow-up to that, the, the last answer, this is kind of a follow-up. Uh, Sherwin West, um, who do you talk to at the city when you believe a city employee is on the take? Or, or not doing a good job? We've got a, a fraud waste and, and, uh, fraud and waste hotline, uh, that is, uh, through the city controller's office, we also have an individual department, if you call 311 and you ask to be connected with the fraud hotline, uh, it is, you're identically protected. Um, we've had to do that ourselves as council, uh, members and council employees. My first year, there was a building and safety inspector that a business told me had asked for a bribe, and, um, we reported him, we took care of it, I went straight to the general manager as well, but that, that hotline works, and if you call 311, they will connect to. All right, thank you. And then just on a, a quick one, what is the, uh, the program address for your parking space on your smartphone again? Uh, so if you go to either in the Android marketplace or the iPhone, I mean, to the apps store, you go and search for Parker, it's called Parker. P-A-R-K-E-R. P-A-R-K-E-R. Parker. Okay. You got that right? It's free, you have an Android, I think it's a buck ninety-nine for iPhones, and I didn't set the price, we're not making any money off it. All right. Dory, I think Thomas, you guys should go back to school. Your penmanship is awful. It's a keyboard time, you know, it's a keyboard age. It's true. Well, what is your last name? It is Thomas. Why? Sorry, I didn't mean to embarrass you. Um, is the plan to lease out city parking lots to private companies still alive? It seems like a very short sighted solution to a much bigger budget problem. Yeah, I'm very glad to have led the killing about planning this past year. I thought it was, A, the amount that we were gonna get was inflated, B, it kicked the can instead of actually getting structural savings that were long-term, because it was gonna be one year, filling a hole, we can't do anything the next year with parking lots, and we were gonna basically lease these off for fifty years. Sixty-plus percent of all those parking spaces are in my district up to fifteen, so this was something personal for me. Part of the Hollywood success we've had is because we have the parking now for people when they come, Hollywood and Highland, we're building another one on Blind Street, um, our Cherokee lot, et cetera, at the Arc Light Cinema, if you ever seen a movie at Arc Light in Hollywood, you know, it's good parking. Um, it seemed to be the very boneheaded idea. Um, I've heard stirrings that there's conversations happening where people are trying to resurrect it in new ways. I will continue to oppose that, my community spoke out very clearly about that, that, you know, Hollywood now, just for all of us, I know it's one neighborhood, but we all have a stake in it. We increased our tax revenues four hundred and thirty-nine percent in the last decade of Hollywood, which we spent on the entire city, goes for our general fund, doesn't stay in Hollywood. So the reason we've been able to hire cops, the reason we've been able to maintain, you know, our fire, uh, our response times, our paramedic stuff, is because it's been a prosperous business area, people aren't necessarily going to Burbank or Glendale, they're actually in Hollywood, and parking's been a huge part of that. If we gave that away the way that Chicago did, I don't know if folks would follow the Chicago deal, but in Chicago, people were taking baseball bats to the parking meter if they were so upset. They were, they, Chicago had to stop their program of raising rates, which they needed to do to pay back the investors, so now it's actually a money loser for them. They're taking money out of their general fund from their services to pay off the bond for the next thirty years, and they sold it for a billion less than what it was worth. So I'm more than a skeptic on this. I, I would like to see us balance our budget without doing crazy things with our parking, parking is critical to the strength of our, of our commercial strips. Okay, um, Lewis, or Lois asks, um, people who work in the private sector retire at age sixty-five with a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars a year from social security. How can we expect to support teachers who work thirty hours a week, eight and a half months a year, then retire ten years early with twice the money we get? I'm not, the teachers are different, but I'll take public employees for a second, because, uh, teachers actually, if you look at their education level, earn a lot less than what they could outside of teaching. I think public teachers are doing incredible job. My grandmother lived on Dickens here for years, after she retired as a public school teacher, didn't, wasn't living in any luxury, I can tell you that, she barely paid for her, sorry, she could barely, my grandmother, who was a public school teacher, lived here in Sherman Oaks on Dickens, um, she could, you know, just support herself, but she was not living in luxury. There are things that we can find where there are absurd, um, absurd examples of where public pensions don't work, and we need to fix those. We need to raise our retirement ages, I do agree, that's something good. I, I think we should make sure people can't double dip. I think we need to make sure that we, um, have a reasonable way of return. But a couple of things that people should keep in mind, which is why I think our negotiations have been as fruitful and successful with our unions as they have been. Um, on average, for, if you have a kind of blue collar job, public salaries are slightly higher than the private sector. If you have any kind of white collar job, if you're an engineer, uh, and by the way, city employees have a higher level of education than in the private sector in general, you earn a lot less. You don't get, uh, social security, but yes, then there's a pension and, um, and healthcare benefits. The main drivers of our deficit in the city have been that our healthcare costs have tripled in the last decade, and our pensions, when there's a downturn in the stock market, for instance, suddenly our first obligation as a city is to pay those pensions even before we provide the services to the city, because it's a contract with our employees. And so one of the things we tried to do this year is to reset the formula to say, each year that we work, maybe it's not two and a half percent, but it's more like two percent, um, as we did with our sworn, so that when we have firefighters and police officers, we want them to stay with the city. In fact, that's part of the reason we have public pensions, is to reward people staying there for a long time and not jumping around as much. We're also looking for some employees at a 401K plan for engineers, for instance, who want to have something that guarantees that they'll get a contribution into their plan, but they don't have a guaranteed payout for it. Um, but in terms of whether, you know, public employees are causing the economic downturn in the, in the country, they're not the cause of, of why we have a bad economy right now. We do need to fix it, I think I've led that fight for pension reform, but we've done it in a way, you know, I'll end on this, and it's a longer response than, uh, I was doing on the first question, but, um, you know, Governor Schwarzenegger, his approach was demonize the public workers and tell them how much they're, you know, stealing from all of us, and thump his chest, and then I will extract from them, you know, great concessions. And when he did, people said, boy, he's tough and he got a lot done, and that was the right approach. Here in the city of Los Angeles, we did the same thing with our police and fire that he'd done with highway patrol and others. We actually got a little bit more from them by sitting down with them, looking at them, saying, we, thank you for what you do, you put your lives on the line for us, but we have to solve this and you have to do something about it. We got more, and people said, they're not tough enough, they gotta go further. So I think sometimes it's the theatrics, people want, kind of, they're upset by the moment, they want to hear somebody thump and they want to see headlines, but if you actually look at the numbers, I've always found that the toughest approach is to be tenacious enough, to be detailed and engaging enough to get the agreements done, and that's better done when you actually sit with some respect across the table with each other. You, uh, you talked about the, uh, the great story about the, um, the cupcake person in your district, and, and just a question as far as the, it would have been a lot easier for her, or it would be very easy for anybody to go ahead and get one of those catering trucks and park in front of her business that pays fees, pays permit fees, has a brick and mortar business, and sell cupcakes in front of her store. And most of those catering trucks, uh, are, are all cash businesses and are contributing to our, uh, our revenue sources. What's the city of Los Angeles doing to, uh, to help the brick and mortar businesses of Los Angeles? Well, a couple of things. One, on the, the mobile restaurants, we're looking at making sure that we do have enforcement of what they're paying or not paying, um, of looking at their business licenses and working with the county on health concerns. I think the model is what can we do to help our brick and mortar businesses have it be as easy as it is now to open up a truck and not vice versa, how do we turn the trucks into as bureaucratic, a, a nightmare as a brick and mortar place has? We pushed very hard, it actually came out of Hollywood, that now for restaurants that are renewing their conditional use permits, that they're able to do that now, basically with the stroke of a pen from somebody from the planning department. Whereas before, when a hundred percent of the neighborhood said, yes, we love this restaurant, we want to continue, but it was the end of their time, they had to hire a consultant, they had to go through months and get a formal reapproval.